Welcome to the Tuesday, July 23rd, Ann Arbor Planning Commission Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee Meeting. If you'd like to participate by giving a public comment, you can do so by calling our toll-free number 877-853. Though I guess you said it was only on Zoom, so it's not going to be on CNT later. So you can only connect by Zoom, so just do *9 or the raise hand feature. And city staff will select you and identify you by the name that is listed. And you have up to three minutes to address the subcommittee. And I think that is it, so we'll move directly to public comment.
And Julia, Associate Planner Julia Shake will be running public comment this evening.
If I can figure it out. I don't know Brett, if I have, if I'm just a panelist, I don't know if I have the ability to promote.
Let me start the first speaker and then I'll fix that.
We do have one hand raised at this time.
Molly Kleinman, you have three minutes to address the committee.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Molly Kleinman and I am the President of the Ann Arbor District Library Board of Trustees. I'm calling in regard to the Town Center Concept Document included in today's packet. The library board received a presentation about an earlier version of this concept several years ago, but did not then and has not ever approved a resolution in support of the concept or expressed an official stance on it of any kind. The document in your packet includes Board of Ann Arbor District Library and its Coalition of Supporters list. And this is incorrect. The board has never expressed support for this concept. And I'm calling today to make sure that subcommittee members are not misinformed. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to address the subcommittee during the public comment, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom and city staff will identify you and allow you to speak for up to three minutes.
Are no other hands raised at this time.
Thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Leonard, who will introduce the consultants for the comprehensive plan and lead us through our discussion tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time this evening. I am in the process of bringing in a couple of members of our consultant team who will be doing the majority of the discussion this evening. First off, you have, we will be joined by Jamie Granger and Stacy Chen of Interface Studio. They are the lead consultant for our comprehensive plan. And then they're joined by Oliver Kylie of Smith Group, also part of that consultant team. We're at a pretty exciting point from my perspective is that we've spent a lot of time over the first half of this year and actually late last year, doing a lot of public engagement in a lot of different formats. We've talked and heard from a lot of people through a lot of different forums. And now we're what I think is a really invigorating and challenging at the same time point and starting to shape wide types and ranges of feedback, both quantitative and qualitative into the beginnings of what this actual document is going to say. And so I think you're going to see as part of our conversation this evening, some of that pivot point or that inflection point going from a lot of community engagement to the starting to create this, the bones of what this document is going to be and what it's going to do for us. It's not to say that we're not going to have a lot of opportunities for community engagement going forward. This is a community-based process, so all on the process, there's going to be a lot of touch points with this. But tonight you're going to get a sense of some high-level synthesis of some of the feedback we've heard. You've already seen some from our public workshops, but now that we've closed our online survey, we're going to get some very preliminary highlights of some of that data. We had over 3,000 responses to that, which is fantastic. And some preliminary ideas about structure for the comprehensive plan and some what I think are pretty bold and innovative ideas to start really jumping off to specifically some of the direction given to you by the city council in drafting a comprehensive plan that focuses on fewer zoning districts that provides more flexibility and more adaptability going forward. So a lot to cover this evening and a lot of realms. And I think we'll kick it off with Jamie getting started. Jamie, I'll leave it to you and the team if you'd like to entertain questions as you go or the like. And you are probably going to be need to make a panelist as well.
Okay, sounds good. Let me share my screen real fast. Okay, can everybody see this? Great. Let me go full screen. Okay, there we go. Well, good evening, everyone. As usual, thanks for making time for us. It's always a useful conversation for us as part of the process. Brett already talked a little bit about today's agenda, but it's really kind of broken up into two parts. We're going to talk a little bit about some of the emerging themes and how that translates into values, visions and goals. And then pivot a little bit and talk about some ideas about future land use and scenarios. So before we get into it, we thought it would be useful just to think about, you know, where this plan's going. So these are typically the components of a comprehensive plan. There's the values, visions, goals, recommendations. This is a very simplistic hierarchy. But the values are really, you know, the core guiding principles. The vision is more of a future-oriented declaration. The goals are objectives to help achieve the vision and recommendations are more specific strategic actions. So tonight we're going to talk a little bit, at least at the beginning, about the values and visions, touch on goals a little bit. And then the second part, we'll dive into a little bit more of the recommendations, particularly around future land use. So as Brett alluded to, you know, we've been having a lot of conversations, a lot of engagement. We're starting to, you know, there's a few clear themes that have been emerging through the process. So it's really about coalescing some of those themes, gathering them together and starting to translate that into, into the document. So, you know, just to revisit this slide, we shared this with you before, but this process will really replace a few plans, fold in a few existing plans. So we've been combing through the documents that are going to be folded into the comprehensive plan and really trying to gather those important themes and objectives from them. And that, you know, this comprehensive plan is going to be kind of this umbrella document where these other plans will be under, so it's going to be important that they speak to each other. So, you know, there's a bunch of themes that have been emerging from that process. More specifically, we're looking at the values. These were identified by city council and the onset of the process. These can be, you know, early on, we realized, you know, these can be defined in a variety of different ways. So it's going to be important for us to, to have the community craft the vision or the values and the definition of what these actually mean for Ann Arbor. So the values being sustainability, affordability, equity. And then we've been asking more specifically about the vision. We've been using this Mad Lib activity to help the community kind of craft their future vision for Ann Arbor. So we've been compiling all of that information and there's a few common themes that have really emerged. So from the existing plans, a few things that come out of those planning documents that are kind of common throughout are a desire for high quality of life. This theme around resiliency and connectivity, a healthy and safe community, community, a city that's community-based and economically vibrant. When talking about the values, sustainability, some of the key things that came out were environmental protection and climate action, reduction of car dependency and energy efficiency and renewable energy. From affordability, it's mostly about housing, housing costs, diversity of housing, property tax burden, and to a lesser extent, the cost of goods and services and mobility. And then equity, housing comes up again, access to services and amenities and economic diversity and inclusion. From the future-oriented vision, Mad Lib exercise, people envision an Ann Arbor that's affordable and accessible housing, more transit options, protected trees, natural areas, diverse housing options, better outreach to diverse groups and livable city welcoming for all. So, you know, this is a broad list, though all of this is really helping inform our values, visions and goals. So first, we're going to jump into the values. So what are the overarching values for Ann Arbor? Again, these were determined on the onset of the project. And we're really taking a first crack at how we can potentially define these values for the process and things that will be kind of interwoven throughout the document. So again, this is really just a first take, a working draft, but wanted to share with you to kind of get your take. So in Ann Arbor, in Ann Arbor, we value affordability. We believe that all people, regardless of income level, should have the opportunity to call Ann Arbor home. In Ann Arbor, we value sustainability. We're committed to the efficient integration of all systems, both man-made and natural, to create a resilient community. And in Ann Arbor, we value equity. We ensure equal access to essential services and amenities for all and additional resources for historically underserved communities. So hoping to take a little break and have a discussion. Before we start that, we thought it'd be important to share a little bit of context and that we had this same exact discussion last week with the steering committee. A few things that came out of that discussion, where I think generally the steering committee felt they were, you know, these were touching the right points and kind of moving in the right direction. There was a little bit of trepidation about potentially committing to things that the city may or may not be able to follow through in. So I think there's some, you know, wordsmithing that we can do with some of this. But also there was a lot of discussion around the potential for adding another value, the ideas around vibrancy and authenticity, the things that make Ann Arbor authentic. You know, thinking about that being a potential value as well. So going to take a quick break and pose the same questions to you that we posed to the steering committee and hopefully having a discussion. So are there themes that are missing? You know, we rattled off a bunch of themes. Do you think there's something that's really missing from that process that needs to get folded in? Do these values resonate with you and should we include additional values? So going to open it up to discussion and anyone else who was, was at the meeting, if there's any, anything else you want to add to the, you know, the conversation we have with the steering committee, feel free. I see your hand raised, Brett.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Leonard.
Yeah, no, thanks, Jamie. And I wanted to follow up on the conversation of another value. We, I think that the, I would, I think that the steering committee was looking, there was discussion about that there should be another value about quality of life or livability or something that is trying to focus some attention and goals and objectives and implementation strategies about what makes Ann Arbor unique. I would share the same question to you that I shared with the steering committee, however, is that I think you could look at this two ways. One, you could look at, of course, Ann Arbor is unique. There are aspects of Ann Arbor that are inherently unique to us as a community. No other community has the University of Michigan located in its boundaries to such a significant degree. We have a tremendous natural resource in the Huron River that goes through our community. There are some unique aspects about the city of Ann Arbor. On the flip side, I think you could look at livability and quality of life as we have been quite successful in that. And that's what's creating, I think, a lot of attention to the need to focus on equity, affordability and sustainability. Because we have, you could look at that we have been successful in being a livable, high-quality-of-life place that has potentially challenged some of these values to make it accessible to everybody. So I guess I would, that's one thing that I thought was a particular thread of conversation of the steering committee beyond a more, more generalized. That's not to say that there might be other values that you have in mind, but I think that was a little bit deeper dive on one additional sort of tension or value that was being discussed at the steering committee.
I'm just going to scroll up so you can kind of sit on this a little bit. And if you want me to scroll up to the themes as well, I can do that.
Commissioner Wetherby.
So this is just sort of off the top of my head here. But there are some, and I, I'm sure you've grappled with this of like, if there's equity, then affordability kind of would fit under that by default in some ways in my head. Like, you know, what's affordable to one person is different than affordability to somebody else because that's part of the equity piece. The other thing, and I'm, I'm seeing a little bit of that too with like sustainability and affordability or equity, you know, with like transit and, and sort of where are the boundaries? And maybe it doesn't matter if we have, you know, if some things fall in multiple areas. But that's just something that I'm seeing like, it's a little bit hard for me to say, oh, this one is equity and this is affordability, because to me they're, they're kind of part of each other. The other thing that I don't see anywhere, maybe mentioned a little bit under amenities or resources is sort of our approach to business, like business friendly. I mean, some communities are very business friendly, like that's what they, we have kind of, I think, historically been like, yeah, we're Ann Arbor, you want to be here and, and not kind of worried so much about the business like being a place that's good to do business in outside of. Anyway, that's just one, that's just one little piece that I, I haven't seen in this and I've seen it in some other cities that are much, much more focused on kind of being a business-friendly city. And I don't know that that is anything we value, but that's just something that I kind of noticed wasn't mentioned in a lot of this. So those are just some off the top of my head thoughts.
I would, I would share that we received some similar feedback from the steering committee that there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of overlap. Affordable housing does have equity relationships. And so I think part of it is finding the right places. I mean, I don't think that's necessarily bad. It sort of doubles down on that as an important value. But I think that was shared that there is sort of some, there's some question about where these, like sort of which goals, some of these recommend, these strategies might really most appropriately fall under. We'll get into the, I think we'll get into the business item a little bit in our land use scenarios a little bit. But I think that is an interesting question. Would, does, does the subcommittee think that somewhere in these values or a different value, we should, we should elevate that, given that sort of historical tension in the city? The frank manner, the frank aspect of that is most of our economic development is the University of Michigan. It's not to say that we don't have a role. The city council's actually recently passed some resolution that has emphasized a desire to sort of, to invest further into that. I'm curious if that resonates with any of the other commissioners, a business-focused value of some sort.
Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
Thank you. I don't know that I have fully formed thoughts, but here we are. I, I worry a little, and I mean, I can be talked out of this. This is just sort of my initial thinking. Like, I don't want to add a million values. I feel like that maybe dilutes some of the values and just trying to, like, thinking about comparing Ann Arbor to other cities, like, doesn't everybody sort of value like livability? I mean, these, these three just feel like, these are like critically important things, like if we're affordable, we will be livable. If we're equitable, we will be livable. I sort of, I think right now I'm on the camp of like, these are really strong and really challenging values. And I think that, wordsmithing aside, like, I think that these are what, I, I don't want to put words in the mouth of every Ann Arborite, but like this feels to me like, like with the direction that we need to be going for a lot of reasons in this city. And I, Brett, I was reading too, like your notes from the meeting that I missed last week. And like, I don't know, I don't know that I would agree with the value around like livability and community character because I feel like that could be perceived in a way that I'm not sure that we want it to be perceived. I know there's, you know, there's a lot of tensions between like, does affordability mean we have to be denser and like, I think a lot of people think what keeps Ann Arbor like, gives its uniqueness is no change. And I don't think that's what we want to say either. I don't know, I'm rambling, but I think my point is, I like having three and I worry that adding like one or two more values just sort of like dilutes the impact that these could have. And yay, Commissioner Dish raised her hands. Now she can ramble.
Commissioner Dish.
Or be more coherent than me.
I am so glad to have permission to ramble. Not that I usually need it. But, um, so I wanted to comment that I like the way that affordability and equity are defined so that we can see that they're interrelated, but they are distinct. And so that's working for me. But could you give me an example of what is a man-made system versus a natural system?
Yeah, so the sustainability on its, you know, it's, it's so broad. And I think we were trying to incorporate some of these themes around, you know, providing choice and mobility, reducing car dependency, you know, thinking of those as kind of man-made systems, thinking about opportunities to improve, you know, sustainability in the way that we're actually making our buildings. But then also thinking about it from like a natural systems, so some of the natural features, rivers, things like that. So it was trying to kind of touch on, on both of those within the same value, which is challenging. But that's kind of the intent.
Okay, I like that. I like that distinction and because that's the way you cashed it out, I would like to add social. Because I think that part of our A2 zero goals depend on us encouraging stronger social ties, which are a key to resilience. So that when the power goes out, you have a neighbor who says, I have a generator. I have a charger. I have a freezer you could use. And there's, and people have email chains and they write each other emails in those instances where they know to go to a resilience hub. So I, given that that's how you're defining man-made, which is sort of at the systems and infrastructural level, I think it would make sense to to add social and then I don't know if I'd want to say to create or to support a resilient community. But that's more of a picky thing. Because you've got, I mean, what you've got here as it is in sustainability is some kind of interplay between these infrastructural things, the natural features things and community. But the fact that community has to also be built and that we're enacting things to help that doesn't come through from that.
Thank you. I think for my part, as I look at this, I sort of echo Commissioner Wetherby's observation that affordability can be achieved through equity. So that if we are moving in an equitable way, we will also be moving in a way that acknowledges people at various income levels. I don't have any objection, however, naming it separately. Because I think sometimes we have to be intentional about the things that we actually value. So we have to say them out loud and name them. And I do appreciate Commissioner Dish's comment around the social. I was thinking in my own head around the wordsmithing to sort of the like interconnectedness or community sort of that, that we are a community or that that's a value is that we value sort of a community approach to how we are trying to solve our problems so that no one is sort of isolated or having to do things on their own with regard to it. So those are just a couple of my observations with regard to this section. Does anyone else have a comment here before we move on? Or turn it back over to Jamie? Okay. And then can I just make a comment to the attendees? I noted that a couple of attendees who are not on the panel raised your hand. Unfortunately, the time for public comment was at the beginning of the meeting. So if you do have a public comment or a question that you would like to pose to the subcommittee, I think our email address is planning@atgov.org. So planning@atgov.org. And that will go to city staff and it will be included in the planning commission's packet at the next regular meeting. Jamie.
All right, thanks. So transitioning a little bit from values to vision. So, you know, before we started thinking about crafting a new vision statement, we, we figured it would be useful to, to look at the current Ann Arbor vision statement from the 2009 plan. So this is it. I'm not sure if you're all familiar with it. I'm not going to read it in entirety, but I figured calling out a few of the, the themes that are in this statement could be useful. So it talks a little bit about dynamic community, a safe and healthy place, interconnectedness of natural transportation, land use, natural systems improved and protected. Calls out the Huron River and downtown specifically. Talks about transportation and alternative modes, extensive choice in housing, including low-cost housing, protecting historically significant buildings, neighborhoods, diversity, beauty, vibrancy, livability. So there's a lot there. I think you'll notice, you know, as we discuss some of the themes that are coming out of it, our process, it's not too dissimilar from a lot of the things we're hearing. So I think, you know, really the question is how does a new vision statement reflect Ann Arbor's aspirations in today's climate and for today and going forward? So there's a few different, you know, I, I think there's a few different ways we can approach this. We can kind of recraft and a new vision statement and kind of push some of the themes that more aggressively. I think as the city has kind of changed over the, you know, the past 20 years, I think there could be a more forceful statement about affordable housing, about the climate and climate action, about equity and inclusion, things like that. But we could also take a completely different approach. So, you know, one of the overall goals of, of this process is really to, to think about how we can kind of simplify the comprehensive plan, make it more approachable. So thinking about maybe going away from a vision statement and something more like a vision slogan, something very simple, easy to understand. You know, this, so thinking about, you know, rather than a broad vision statement that people may not remember or say a lot, but not say a lot at the same time, maybe not unique for, you know, as we reflect on a lot of vision statements and in other comprehensive plans, they often say a lot of the same thing, often not specifically unique to the place. So how can we make something that's a little more memorable? So thinking about what if we just say Ann Arbor for all? You know, this is something that, you know, we've, are developing a lot of different themes. It's something that's kind of cross-cutting across all of them is this idea around diversity and options. You know, we, we talk a lot about providing diverse mobility options, diversity in housing, biodiverse natural features, diversification of the economy, being welcoming diverse people, you know, all of these different things. And we think being welcoming diverse people, you know, all of these different things. And we think this could potentially encapsulate a lot of those things. So this is potentially how it could play out. You know, you could say Ann Arbor is for people from all backgrounds. Ann Arbor is for ensuring all those who work in the city can live in the city. Ann Arbor is for housing of all different types at all different price points. Ann Arbor is for providing mobility options of all different kinds. Ann Arbor is for promoting businesses of all types, big and small. Ann Arbor is for ensuring individuals have access to all the services amenities city has to offer. Ann Arbor is for biodiversity and protecting all of our natural features. You know, you get the idea where it's going. So this is, you know, how we would interact with the, the values. You could say Ann Arbor is for all. We believe that all people regardless of income level should have the opportunity to call Ann Arbor home. We are committed to the efficient integration of all systems. We ensure equal access to central service amenities for all. As I was flipping through those slides, it's starting to develop some ideas around goals. On the right are just some, you know, initial take of where some of the goal topics could be. We don't have a specific number in mind. I think our initial thinking is maybe we'll have 10, maybe it's more, maybe it's less. But some of these goals could be specific around housing, mobility and connections, natural features and environmental protection, healthy and active living and parks, access to services and amenities, economic opportunity and diversity, energy efficiency and carbon reduction and community. So again, these are just kind of a working draft. But wanted to just get your take on what do you think of potentially doing some, a much more simplified vision statement of something more aligned with the vision slogan? And just get your overall take on that.
All right. Who would like to start that discussion? All right, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
Thank you. I really like it when you put up the slide with the previous one and it was just a million words that you had to bold for me to even focus in on anything. And I add, I don't even remember what any of it was. I really like, I like when things are simple and easy to understand. And I think I, I like the idea of some doing something really simple. And I like the A two for all as well. Except I, I first read it, I was like, maybe it should be a four. And then I was getting like way too, you know, like way too weird about it, but I like the A two for all. Can you go back a slide? Cause I had another thought. When we were looking at sort of how you're doing this and some of the goal areas and reflecting back on what Commissioner Weatherby had said about businesses and thinking about affordability, like another issue, you know, the economic, I don't know if it's quite captured here. I just like, I remember discussions we had during TC one, people seemed really concerned about losing small businesses once corridors start to get redeveloped. And I'm wondering if under affordability, we're not just concerned about people being able to live in Ann Arbor, but also to like open businesses in Ann Arbor. And I'm not sure that that really folds into a goal, but like that might, I don't know if you could like even make that sound good within the affordability, but it's like, it's not just affordability to live here. It's like affordability to be able to thrive here in whatever that means to you. So it was just, that was just a thought I had as I was sort of going through some of your goal areas that is maybe missing. Is that like, where do we have opportunities for local businesses? Cause rent is crazy high everywhere.
Yeah. Thanks for that perspective. You know, all of this is, is very useful for you know, kind of the next iteration of, of where these, these values are going. So thanks.
Commissioner Dish.
Thank you, Chair Mitch. I like the idea of Ann Arbor for all. I am a little bit worried that some of the statements where you spelled out what that would mean when you went through the series of sentences could open us up to charges of cynicism or hypocrisy. Because, and part of it is because some of the statements, if you, if you put them all together, they all sound like we're going to do all of these things all of the time. And maybe that's just me thinking that, but they all seem like strong commitments and they are strong commitments, but the fact is, is when we come to making decisions about allocations of resources and approvals of projects and all of that sort of thing, we end up having to trade off among these. And we have gotten some very strong criticism from people who feel that we have traded off approving housing projects for achieving our carbon neutrality goals, or we've traded off density for protecting natural features. And so I, I am, I like the slogan. I think that a slogan can be read as both aspirational and, and true. But I had some worries about the sentences that followed up.
Yeah, I mean, it's to be determined, you know, how those sentences will actually be, you know, come within the final document. You know, it was just kind of a initial first take at how this could be applied. I think vision statements are probably notorious for for trying to achieve things that cities can necessarily follow up on. But I, I think that's something that has come up, it came up a lot in our steering committee meeting as well about tying some of our goals to making, you know, distinction between things that the city actually has control over and things that maybe it doesn't. And tying metrics to it that the city can actually follow up on. So, you know, I, I think that's an important piece of this. I'm not necessarily sure if it will, you know, manifest itself in the vision or if it will be more directly tied to some of the goals and specific metrics that we can actually follow up to later.
Mr. Leonard.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that observation, Commissioner Dish. I would, I would just add some a couple of comments. So one, I think you'll see those same trade offs, challenges in the current vision statement. That long winded one that Jamie featured at the beginning of his presentation from our current plan. There are, I think contradictions is too strong a word, but there are challenges to achieve all of those things similarly. And I would, I would, I would say that I agree, but the notion that we can always accomplish all of these things to the full extent that they are articulated is challenging for us or any community, but perhaps breaking them down in this way gives us the ability to prioritize them. It might not be numerical, maybe it's categorical. But it might be actually a way to face some of those inherent trade offs that are difficult for decision makers, community, property owners and the community on different levels to different extents all the time in a more head on manner. So I think it's a great observation and maybe that's something we can think about is how we, how we present that with that theme that, you know, there has, and, and that's something that, that you and the balance of council asked this commission to do is put together a values framework that helps us to face those kind of trade off decisions in the future.
Does anyone else have comments here? Commissioner Weatherby?
I can have a comment. I, I like it. I, I think, you know, so much of what happens even in the long winded one, when I read it, I was actually sort of pleasantly surprised that we've actually done a lot of those things. You know, in 2009, there was no Argo Cascades, there were no bike lanes, there were no, you know, so to a certain extent, whether, whether these are pithy little statements or or long winded, it's kind of what happens after the statement is made that is really what's gonna, what's going to matter. I do like the, the A two is for all. I think it's catchy and easy to put on a billboard or a T-shirt or, you know, all in for A two. You can, you can work it a lot of different ways, but I think, I think really what happens after that is really the important part. Even though this is the part that goes on all the shiny sheets.
I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Weatherby. They are pretty much in line with the ones that I was thinking about, which is I really do like the statement, A two is for all. I think it's aspirational. I think when we think of vision, we're looking ahead 10, 20, 30 years. And so of course we have work to do to realize the vision. And I think we can potentially address some of the concerns that Commissioner Dish addressed or highlighted in a preamble. So here's the vision, here's the hard work that it's actually going to take to do this. This is sort of the what? And now we have to get about the how, how do we make Ann Arbor? You know, it make it available for all. So we have to build more housing. We have to build better infrastructure. We have to ensure that we're valuing all size of economic development in the city, not just large developers, but also small mom and prop stores, that those individuals have a chance in Ann Arbor. And so I think we can be more verbose in a, in a preamble or an index or in a, in a, in another document that is a part of the comprehensive plan, but staying here, I think it's, it's clear, it's catchy. It's, it's memorable. People can live into it. And so I, I really like it. Anyone else? Before I turn it back over to Jamie? Okay. Back to you, Jamie. You're muted.
Sorry about that. We're going to transition a bit here. I'm going to turn it over to Oliver to, to go through these. Oliver, if you just want to let me know when to change the slides, feel free.
Sure. No, sounds good. I coming through okay here?
Yeah.
Alrighty. So shifting gears a little bit, I think, you know, obviously the big question is, you know, we have all of these values, goals that we're talking about that we want to work towards. A key part of that conversation has really been around housing. You know, how do we create more housing opportunities of all different kinds for all different people, going back to the A two for all idea? And I mean, honestly, a big, a big part of that is figuring out like, how many residents are we planning for? How do, how does that affect the affordability and the impact on rental and home prices? What do any of those decisions around residents? And new people that we want to welcome into the community, what does that mean for land use changes that are need, needed to support that and to enable that growth and change? What does it mean for the infrastructure side of things? So we're looking at a set of scenarios and different approaches as kind of tools to help us kind of think through what that might look like. So go to the next slide. I think we had teed up a couple of these ideas for scenarios before, but we're starting to play around with these as a way of just test fitting, kind of what might it start to look like? What might it start to be? And, you know, two leading ideas that have come out that are two different points at a continuum between, you know, the growth that we've seen in the last few decades in the city to, you know, something very aggressive in terms of growth. But these two ideas are here on the screen. One is that, you know, how much housing would we need to create and at what sort of pace? Would we need to build it over time to be able to help stabilize the price of rent increases, help to stabilize the escalation of home price? In order to help support affordability, I think, I just want to make the point that there's a lot of other aspects to affordability too, right? We know that market rate development will help generate funding directly to support, you know, affordable housing development that's built through, you know, public resources. But even just providing more housing period helps bring that pressure down on other properties that may be out of reach. So one, one scenario, I was looking at that sort of at a minimum, what do we need to start trying to work towards to kind of bring the pressure down? Another option that we've been talking about that again, ties into some of the sustainability goals more is around, you know, recognizing that there are a lot of people that are still wanting to come or that are still commuting in, into Ann Arbor for work. As we think we shared last time, we've gone through a lot of public outreach. There was a survey with over 3,000 responses. And one of those questions asked people, you know, if you don't live in Ann Arbor, but you work and you work here, you know, would you like to be able to live in Ann Arbor? And about half of the respondents in that pool said, yes, if I could find housing that met my need and was affordable, I'd love to live in Ann Arbor. So we kind of took that as an indicator and said, well, how many, you know, what if we tried to accommodate housing for half of the commuters that are coming into the city? What does that look like? We know that that's going to be more than what we need to just stabilize housing prices. And that would help us work towards that vehicle mile travel kind of reduction goal. So next slide. What this might start to mean in absolute terms, and these are very kind of rough working numbers, is that to, you know, stabilize home prices, I need around 600 to 900 housing units per year. That translates to about 37,000 new residents by 2050 and is about a 1% growth rate annually each year. This is also part of the housing analysis that was used to generate this is looking at the vacancy rates. And right now the vacancy rates for home sale or for homes, you know, owner occupied housing is right around 1%. And ideally if vacancy rates are around 3%, that is usually where you're starting to stabilize price increases a little bit. I mean, there's other price increases you'll get through, you know, inflation and things like that. But in terms of the market pressure, it starts to bring that down. And similarly, we're about at a 3% vacancy rate for rental and 6% is where you start to see a little bit of a healthier balance and some of that getting stabilized. So that's kind of the, the numbers behind that, behind that scenario. And then idea number two, you can see, you know, it's a fairly significant, you know, more than a doubling of the number of housing that you'd have to build per year. And, you know, 75,000 plus new residents by 2050, which is a fairly aggressive rate. Just for context, Austin, Texas, if you've read about their housing growth situation, they're right around 2% growth rate annually over the last number of years. And they're a much bigger metropolitan area. So the quantity of housing is going, that's getting built is quite a bit higher in absolute numbers, but in terms of a growth rate percentage, it's in that range. So, you know, that's just something to think about in terms of, in terms of context. Next slide. So how, you know, how does this kind of a thing happen? How do we maybe support and enable any, either of these scenarios? Next slide. So we may have shared a version of this earlier too, but you know, there's a lot of things that go into the costs and incentives for development and in terms of the things that affect the pace of development. And thinking about the policies that we can affect to the comprehensive plan that really have an impact on that. One is land zoning, land availability. What we're allowing people to build on different kinds of land areas through regulation. And then also the accompanying part of that, of course, is infrastructure, right? I mean, if we're going to be adding significant numbers of residents, we have to make sure that the public infrastructure, everything from schools to, you know, water and sewer service and transportation infrastructure is there to support it. And then, you know, other things, you know, obviously construction costs, capital costs for developers, you know, return on investment, all of those things are needed to help projects actually pencil out and support development. And I'd also mentioned, I think a question mark a little bit for us is around the capacity question too, right? So we may create an opportunity for, you know, a lot more growth and development to happen. Is there even capacity within the market space and the building community to be able to maintain that momentum? And so that's, that's a legitimate question too. Next slide. And so, you know, how specifically can we start to affect some of the kind of growth potential in either of these scenarios? So the zoning and regulations, you know, we have an So the zoning and regulations, you know, we have an opportunity to help really simplify and streamline that development process. It's very complex and convoluted. We have 34 zoning districts today, as I'm sure you all know, I think 34. And, you know, how do we simplify that down to something that's easier for people, whether you're, you know, a homeowner looking to add an ADU or a small developer looking to build, you know, some small kind of missing middle sized housing, like how do people navigate this? How do we build in greater flexibility in different districts across the city? To allow more types of, more types of housing and development to occur in different areas. But I think central to all of this too, is doing this in a way where we're being thoughtful about how we manage transitions between different types of districts. That the physical form of the city is something that works. And that we're managing that change in a way that's just responding to neighborhood context, livability scale and the kinds of things that'll make, you know, projects supported and not creating kind of an adversarial climate. The next slide. So to that effect, and we kind of didn't really jump ahead, but what helped some kind of big ideas for consideration? And one thought here is to go, you know, from 34 very specific, finely detailed zoning districts down to a very streamlined that maybe three or four or five. And there's three kind of primary ones shown on the screen here as an idea. So the first one on the left, I'll go through these in a little bit more detail and then I'll pause for some discussion. But this idea that we define a neighborhood district or a neighborhood residential district that within that we're really trying to provide a variety of different housing types at a scale that still fits the, the scale and feeling of a neighborhood. But that also allows for a lot more flexibility, allows for some small scale kind of commercial uses to be a part of that. So some of those neighborhood goods and services are things that people can access more easily within their neighborhood without having to drive to somewhere else. That was one. The block in the middle is what we're calling contentively, this mixed use transition that's a district kind of between neighborhood residential and or the higher district hub districts. Provides kind of an automatic sort of self-regulating way of managing height and transition down to the neighborhood areas. Sort of as a baseline enables a greater mixture of uses. It can be cited, you know, in kind of core district areas or along busier streets and corridors. And then lastly, we would have kind of the mixed use hub site. So think like TC1 existing downtown areas, you know, other areas to potentially be zoned to this. That would allow for, you know, taller buildings, desire to really carefully align that with transit and transit infrastructure, larger sites, you know, places that are close to other anchor destinations, things like that. So next slide. I think this is, this is a really important slide and we can pause after this and the next one for a little bit of discussion on this one before we dive into each of the other ones. But, you know, when we've gone through our community conversations with people, a lot of what we hear is, yeah, you know, I'm supportive of more housing, but you know, I don't want really tall buildings like built right next to me in my neighborhood. I think the good news through all of that is that there's, you know, when you talk about the missing middle, there's a whole layer of housing density and quite high densities that can be achieved through development patterns, housing styles that still retain kind of a neighborhood scale and height. You look at some of the older, like historic student housing districts, you know, they're getting up to 30, 40 units per acre. There's no reason why similar patterns, you know, with buildings that are no more than 35 feet tall can't also work in areas that aren't necessarily geared towards students, but that are new built areas as well within neighborhoods. So, you know, those neighborhood residential districts, again, kind of thinking through the types of buildings. It's detached houses, you know, it's allowing quadplexes or mini plexes, townhouses, row houses, things like that, and you know, essentially anywhere within a neighborhood district. Couple of the key parameters, 35 foot height limit. You know, maybe we just allow by right, you know, one to four housing units per parcel. And in some zones that have much larger parcel areas, perhaps even allowing more units per acre. Depending on, you know, that the size of the parcels. Still having, you know, private shared yards, typically not always, you know, still having individual kind of unit entries as part of that kind of neighborhood scale development. And then next slide, just had a few other kind of examples. And again, like, these are all things that are local from around Ann Arbor that are starting to achieve in many cases, higher, you know, much higher densities than what we typically see, you know, in neighborhoods that are, you know, planned as single family neighborhoods in the city. Think it probably makes sense to just pause on each of these for some discussion. I don't know, Jamie or Brett, if you had anything else to add real quick on this one, but.
Okay, can we go back to your first slide then? And then take them in that? Yeah. So any commissioners want to comment here before we move on? Commissioner Dish.
If, if I would just ask, if the commission helps, it would be helpful for considering this. Oliver, you might share sort of the geography, some preliminary geography thoughts about this too, if that is helpful to the discussion.
Yep, we can, we can jump ahead if questions come up on that. Happy to bounce around.
Commissioner Dish.
All right, I wasn't. For a minute I wasn't sure the order. So no, I just want to say one thing, which is that, um. So the two scenarios, stabilize prices versus accommodate have well commuters, good. But I am becoming increasingly aware from the reading that I'm doing about climate change that Michigan is going to be an enormous destination for people who are needing to flee drought prone and storm ravaged areas of the country. And Ann Arbor might not be people's first choice because we're one of the most expensive cities in the state. But people are going to get shifted around. And I think that we need to, I mean, the pressure that this is already putting on housing markets where this kind of migration is already happening. I think I read something about it in the New York Times like a week ago, but I can't remember what, no. But it, you know, if the, if the housing pressure feels scarce and intense and expensive now, it's going to be geometrically increased if we don't prepare for that. And so I don't think it's just a matter of accommodating commuters. I also think it is a matter of thinking about climate change migration. And so, and for me, that would lead me towards the larger, less, the, the, and really more quickly are housing signs. And I think that that ought to be a factor as we think about it. I don't think we should only be thinking about housing the people who work here already. But thinking ahead to, because that's, that's, that's a near term scenario. So that's, that's that.
No, I, I appreciate that, Commissioner Dish. We, one note, I mean, we've looked at, you know, that's a continuum of those scenarios and on the high end, that can continue to go out. You know, we've started to put some assumptions together based on these three district types that are on the screen of like what future capacity, not really, I don't like using the word like build out scenario looks like, but like, could, could that capacity for housing scale beyond what that scenario two is? And with fairly moderate assumptions, you know, it could. So, you know, that's the point about climate migration is, is definitely a factor to be thinking about. So appreciate that.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Weatherby.
I don't know if now is the time or after we look at the three districts. It was helpful that you picked several buildings in my neighborhood. So it really helps me kind of, kind of see what these.
It was random.
But I do live in a neighborhood where there is, you know, that pressure is felt because it's slightly less expensive than say across the road. And so, you know, there has been more building than in some places. And I think, I think part of this is, I don't quite know how to say this. So, I used to live in Boston and in Boston, when you go to buy a house, rarely are people thinking of a single family house. They're thinking of a condo, they're thinking of a three decker, they're thinking of, you know, lots of different housing types, but single family house is only for a small group of people. I think here, when people think about buying a house, they think about a single family house. And one of the things that we have to be prepared for is that we don't have a lot of room if we are going to do, if we're going to increase, say 1.5%, that that is going to almost by definition, re mean that single family housing is not going to be the default type. And, and that may be in lots of different ways. It might be like a three decker with a accessory dwelling, or it might be, you know, whatever that looks like. But I think sort of being honest that we are fairly built out and that that doing a mixed use transition neighborhood or even neighborhood residential that there are, that there are. It, it means things are going to change. And, and I, I realize that that is obvious and it's, but I think sometimes that is something that's hard for people to understand. Like if we're building enough housing for everyone who wants to live here, they're not going to be living in a single family house with a yard and a two car garage. And there's just, we don't have the room for that. As far as I know, I mean, maybe if we, you know, I don't know how it all parcels out, but seems like we're pretty, we're pretty close to being built up. And so that means something's going to have to give to get more. So I, I, I don't quite know how I'm. Go ahead.
Nope, you're, you're good. I was just nodding in agreement.
Okay. Yeah. And so, uh, that's just something that I'm, I'm thinking about. The other thing, because there are a lot of, and this will just go for all three, is really the distinction between like neighborhood residential, mixed use transition. I think mixed use hub is its own thing and maybe a little easier to understand, but like in my neighborhood where there are pictures of these things like the mixed use transition is actually farther out from downtown than the neighborhood residential buildings and, you know, how that actually looks and the reality of that, because now it's sort of like, oh, we got these parcels and we got a PUD or it's a commercial zoning. And so we were able to build taller, even though it's inter residential neighborhood and, you know, and so how that all kind of fits together. But, but that's kind of as we talk more about this down the road.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
I've lost the plot a little on what exactly we're supposed to be discussing right now. I will just say, I like these ideas in theory. They make sense to me. Like neighborhood residential, yes, that is sort of what we're going to have to start doing. I mean, none of us have crystal balls, right? I'm just not sure how this plays out in practice, like especially after listening to Commissioner Weatherby talk and just thinking through like, and Commissioner Dish with like, we need to build more housing, like the things that she was saying about climate change is spot on. Like I work in real estate development. I've got people contacting us all the time from California, like we need to move back to Michigan because droughts and fires and but I don't know how we actually build it fast enough. I know that's like a completely different conversation, but like, I just want to make sure that we're setting ourselves up to, to have the space to build in these districts. So I guess with all of that, I am looking forward to seeing how this is being mapped out.
Mr. Leonard.
Yeah. So as Oliver's, I think about to move to the next district, a couple of, just a couple of themes that came up, just sharing some of the conversations of the steering committee. When we're, when we're talking about this neighborhood residential, adding small scale commercial into that space is frankly a new thing. We have a pretty very robust home occupation, but to actually take that a step further and figure out the right and right balance for adding commercial into that space is to go further, but just to acknowledge that I think that what we're starting to learn from some research of other communities, this neighborhood residential may very, very, be very much akin to our experience in Ann Arbor with accessory dwelling units. That is, I look at this district as accessory dwelling is we've been, we established in 2016 and here we are in 2024, we've had about 50. And that's with a couple of relaxations to the regulations to make them a little bit easier. And so I, I want to be clear that when I see this neighborhood residential district, I see it as a great opportunity to get to some of the issues that Commissioners Hammer Schmidt and Dish were talking about, that we have limited real estate here in Commissioner Weatherby, that we're a largely built out city. We have to look at everything and that was a big piece of our, our plans. But we also have to keep in mind that I, I think those, the pieces that have to happen for a successful development to happen are, are impact is very, is relatively small in that. We have, we have some roles and a couple of those steps and there's five steps in that example, right? So the more that we can make sure that that's as flexible as possible, so that when those other things happen to align, we have, we have opened the door as great, as great as possible in our control. I really think that's what the neighborhood residential, as we start shifting to the mixed use transition, I think this is really a, is going to be a really interesting conversation and opportunity for us in the city, because this is going to be really where other communities are starting to have much more success about not, not only opening up development opportunities in their residential districts, but how are they to the course where we, where Jamie started? How are we getting out of the way for all sorts of types of development or from a regulatory perspective? And with the mixed use transition, I want to put one thing in all of your minds, just to maybe bring a different character to light for this. This, the stickover podium model is ubiquitous in the United States. That is where the first story is built with some sort of fire resistant construction and then four levels can be framed construction above that. And you see that happening throughout our community and communities across the state, across the country for that matter, out of some building code regulation factors. And so as we start shifting to this next zone, I brought this up with the steering committee, I want to bring it up with you. That is a prototype of construction that is familiar to a lot of developers, to a lot of builders, to a lot of financiers. And it is something that I would suggest you think about in the terms of where it could be appropriate in this transition district that Oliver's going to go through.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. For my part, I think it is, so one I want to go back to in my handout that I have, I think it's slide 35, which has the approach one and two on it. I think I just want to echo Commissioner Dish's comment that I think as much as we can, we, if I heard you correctly, we should be moving towards approach two. So what can we do to accelerate? And, and make it possible for us to build as much housing as possible. And then looking at the breakdowns that you have across the potential future districts, thank you so much, first of all, for even getting us from 34 to five. I think that, that is really great. If we could cap it at five and not entertain anything beyond five, wow, like that, that's like a gold star times 100 for me. And then I just want to push here, just hearing, reflecting what I heard. So I keep hearing neighborhood, but I'm hearing a single family detached home when neighborhood is then defined. So I grew up in the inner city of Washington DC. We lived in apartments or townhouses or row houses. We were adjacent to all kinds of developments, whether it's public land or schools, whether it was a high rise. I, we lived in a Um, I, we lived in a townhouse-style apartment when I was in middle school and high school. And uh, less than one block away was a thirty-story uh, housing development that my, my uh, aunt. I'm in Michigan now, so I say aunt, but I, growing up in DC, I say aunt. Uh, um, where my aunt lived. And you could see the fireworks from her balcony because she had a clear shot to the Washington Monument from where she was. So when we talk about neighborhood, I want us to uh, either define what we mean by neighborhood, because I'm hearing. That a a neighborhood has a specific height limit, it has a specific setback, it has. Um, s- specific sort of dimensionality to it. And that is sort of discordant. For someone who, uh, like myself, grew up in the inner city, where I thought of my townhouse adjacent to a thirty-story. High-rise, and I'm sure it wasn't thirty stories, but I was in middle school, so it felt like it was thirty stories. I'll correct the record at the next regular meeting of the planning commission in case someone is thinking I'm being too far-filled here, but I thought of that as my neighborhood. And um, what I, what I want to just communicate is I think that people who live in downtown, they think of that as their neighborhood. I think of uh, the students who live on South U and Church and Forests, I think of, I think they think of that as their neighborhood. So. I just really want some clarity there. I'm not asking you to give it to me tonight, but as you move forward in the documents that you prepare. Um, if we could, if we could either broaden. The definition of neighborhood or narrow it and then define it, I think that would be super helpful. And then to my other uh, comment around the five districts, I would love to see us just get to three. And the reason why I would say three is we don't have very much industrial. Um, zoning inside the city and Mr. Leonard will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the majority of it is along Main Street at the river. And um, if we could rezone that, that would be a really great. Uh, place making, uh, sort of like what we're trying to do with the Broadway, West Park and Lower Town. Uh, so I don't think we need um. The sort of that flex for the purpose of industrial, because I don't think we have a lot of industrial. And and by definition, industrial, like even light industrial, I don't think we have a lot of it in the city proper. So um, going from five to four, if we got rid of flex, public, of course, we have a lot of public land, twenty-seven percent you've communicated to us. Is public land, so that one is there. And then I really want to understand what the distinction is between mixed-use transition. And mixed-use hub. And I think the only distinction there is height. And if height is really the distinction, then maybe we combine them and we think of them as a buffer. So how do we buffer between neighborhood residential and. Whatever this next piece is without having to have these five distinct ones. So those, those were just some thoughts. Uh, that I had um, as we moved into the graphs that you're going to show us. Um, and then, of course, I'm going to. Uh, tee up my concerns about some of the height limits that are there, but that's just a preamble. So I'll give it back to you, Oliver.
Awesome. Yeah. Thank you all for the great comments. I think we'll, we can talk through and speak to some of those uh, in the mixed-use transition. Maybe what makes sense to do is I I can just move relatively quickly through. Uh, the mixed-use transition hub flex, I can talk a little bit about our thinking on kind of the map and how this maybe plays out. At a very, very preliminary pass. Um, spatially, and then we can kind of revisit the conversation to and broaden it back out. So. The thinking on the mixed-use district is that this, to use the kind of fancy terminology is like an internally buffered. Kind of district, so it starts off. Um, at a height, you know, where it's adjacent to that neighborhood zone. Um, say of thirty-five feet, you know, within fifty feet of a neighborhood zone, for instance, so. The thinking there is that, you know, if I'm in my neighborhood. And I'm using the word neighborhood with referring to things thirty-five feet or less predominantly residential. Um, and and that was a great, great point about thinking about the language and the, in the verbiage there. Um, but the idea is that, you know, directly next to a neighborhood zone, your sort of height of your buildings is kind of maintained for consistency. But then it can step up fairly quickly, moving away from that. I think to 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 the comment about heights that are allowed within here. Um, I think that's all completely open um, to discussion. Um, kind of as this process moves forward, these were just some example. Kind of numbers to get folks kind of thinking about rough heights ranges. Um, but the idea here, again, you know, maybe you're starting off at a thirty-five-foot-tall building if you're next to a neighborhood district. Um, and that can scale up further you are away. So, you know, maybe every fifty feet you can go up another. Twenty feet or two stories of building height, something like that. Um, the intent would be that this is allowing for a mixture of uh, kind of. Building types and styles within the district, um, really allowing a much broader range of uses a lot um, as well. Um, providing, you know, more opportunities for retail service, um, things like that, you know, close to where people are living. So that was that one, uh, the mixed-use hub district on the next slide. Um, this is kind of a, a slight twist and simplification, maybe on the TC one. Zoning district idea, so TC one starts off, I think, at a fifty-five-foot height, height limit, and then scales up. You know, after a hundred and fifty feet or three hundred feet, it jumps up, or after seventy-five feet, it starts to jump up a little bit. Um, this is maybe just rephrasing that, you know, more. As just a linear step up, so you're starting higher, you know, recognizing that there are some places. In town where you may, you know, have a hub district right up next to a neighborhood district. Um, but you still want to be able to have some of that. Higher height, uh, building height initially to Brett's point around, you know, being able to do, you know, four or five-story um, stick-built podium and stick-cut style construction. Within that area. And again, you know, scaling up much faster. Think one of the things that we were thinking about in this, and you know, all the parameters aren't thought out, but. Looking at the TC one um, zoning today. Now, the places where you can actually get up to the height limit is very, very limited, right? There's only a handful of parcels or even areas within parcels that are. Far enough away from residential districts that you can start to get that height. Um, so being a bit more generous and flexible with that to allow for taller, taller buildings. With within closer proximity of residential areas could be a part of this as well. Again, how tall? How quick it steps up, all of those things are totally open to discussion. Um, throughout this process, but that was just the general idea. Uh, next slide. So to the flex district. Um, the main idea here, and I think there are, you know, as mentioned, that the North Main Corridor is one, there's also South Industrial Highway and then getting. Kind of further to the south where we have some of the city's office and office research lab space. Um, but the idea here, and I think this is a, a question that we've really been grappling with as a team. Is do we want to be intentional about. Almost preserving some areas of the land of the city from residential redevelopment pressure. Just recognizing that there's a di- desire. Um, perhaps to maintain some cheaper and more affordable commercial spaces for certain kinds of commercial uses, incubator spaces. Um, some of the messier kinds of service and repair uses that may be, um, that are currently occurring in some of these areas. And then I think looking ahead, there's kind of an economic development question, you know, we know that the University of Michigan is um, kind of reinvesting a lot of effort in. Their sort of, the, you know, spinning off more startup and entrepreneurial work. Out of research and going into like a pr- applied testing, R and D, product development, all of that kind of space. Um, and anticipating a need for future lab space or other kinds of spaces to accommodate that. You know, do we want to be intentional about potentially protecting some areas of the city from that kind of residential pressure? So that was a, a thought behind this. Um, and you know, we know, uh, put the note at the bottom, you know, can apply to M one, M two. You'll see, kind of as we work through the map, that there are some areas that maybe it makes sense for this to go away, where it's. Kind of more in alignment with this kind of land use today and some, and then other areas where we may want to be intentional about. Creating some more space for it in the future. Oh, Brett, did you just put your hand up again to chime in on anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, I was just going to comment, Commissioner White, you would, uh, when you were talking about collapsing district, I just wanted to double down on what Oliver was saying. The notion of industrial uses in the city, I, I am less concerned about separating these uses from a nuisance perspective, like maybe they started a hundred years ago. We have a lot of ways that we can address that now. I really think the question here is. Um, when residential market forces are pitted against other market forces. In our community, residential market forces will likely win. And so do we want to carve out? Real estate geography where that's not a po- possibility, so that it doesn't mean that we'll be successful in that. Spin-off lab space or business incubator space, but. If that, if those, if that real estate is competing with apartment development. It won't win. Um, so that's. Just wanted to re, double down on what Oliver was saying, and I, I don't know if you were sort of coming from a similar mind, maybe you are. Yeah, the notion of manufacturing industrial seems. Antiquated based on our economic climate. But there are market forces that I think we need to wrestle with just from a business development perspective.
Oliver, you uh, done or are you continuing?
Yep, uh, I will continue. I think we just a couple more slides. Thanks, thanks Brett. So. Um, what we had done to just start to get our arms around what this might look like is very um. Technically, just translating, you know, existing zoning categories into these future land use types. With a bit of manual massaging on top. Um, and you can see um, here that a lot of the C district, commercial districts go into mixed-use buffer, for instance. Excuse me, mixed-use transition, that should be at the top one. Um, a lot of the R one, two, three is all residential neighborhood, R four and higher. Goes to mixed-use transition, you know, the TC one areas downtown, those become those mixed-use hub zones. And then like manufacturing and the office areas could be potentially a mixture of both. Um, depending on where they are. So next slide. And this just kind of applies it very directly through the zoning, but then just makes it a little bit more generalized. Um, with kind of a hand-drawing overlay on top of it. To just simplify this a little bit more. Um, we called out just for context and legibility, like where some of the larger parks and natural areas are, you know, understanding that that is part of, you know, the public land. Assets, but just helping um, that visually to start to read for people um, as a point of orientation. But um, generally, this is kind of what it was looking like. You can see, for instance, you know, a lot of the interior core areas. Of our existing R one, two, three districts kind of fall into that neighborhood residential category. Um, a lot of the, you know, R four and higher areas. In addition to, you know, corridors, some of the major corridors like Packard, Stadium Boulevard. Um, others could go into that mixed-use transition district. And then the mixed-use hub area is focused on some kind of core um, key areas um, that are either already TC one or kind of under consideration in that. In that regard. Um, you can see then, you know, thinking through the flex district. Um, a chunk of that to the south industrial and then down to where some of the office parks are. And then some areas out on the west side of the city. And perhaps the idea that there's something along Plymouth. Um, road that gets carved out in the north. Um, east area potentially for that as well. I think those, that was the major one. We did have a few discussion questions on the next slide and then we can go back to any of these. You know, we already talked about some of them. What do you like or dislike about these district ideas? Or there's some criteria or things we should be keeping in mind. About where these should apply or where some distinctions might want to rest. So I think those are some of the key, key questions.
Mr. Leonard.
Yeah, just a, just a couple of uh, more points, just to, as you contemplate um, and provide any feedback. One, I think what you're seeing here is very referential to our existing land use zone, zoning framework specifically. And so doesn't necessarily have to be, this is a starting point. So one phase is sort of getting together what this framework look. Feels comfortable to us and then it might evolve. We might see corridors. That are not identified in one way that we think would be appropriate to identify in a way. Um, that would, you know, so I, I, I just, that's, that's one thing that I, you know, we're starting, we're trying to start from a familiarity. Um, because it's going to be, it will, it will be hard to sort of collapse our districts. And so. Um, I just, I just want to make sure that you understand, we are not limited to that current framework, but I think what you, what this is, is very referential to it. And then. Second, um, I want to be honest. The plan needs to be honest about the corresponding infrastructure needs for this. The city is doing a lot, has done a lot, and it will be doing a lot of uh, of um, investigation of its capacity um, to oversimplify. Our infrastructure south of the Huron River. In many facets is more limited than our infrastructure north of the Huron River. And south of the Huron River is where much of our land is. And so I just want, it's not to say that. But um, what I've instructed and we've always approached this is this is part of our vision and. But I, I, I just want to make sure that when we are thinking about this, we are being honest, that that's going to come. With the need to figure out infrastructure investments um, at time, in order to serve a much greater. Density and need across the city. So just two things to keep in mind as we go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Commissioners. Who would like to get started?
Sounds like we're all good here.
Uh, no. I have thoughts. Just waiting for others. Sorry, go ahead, Oliver.
I was just gonna add kind of a clarification or a, uh, an expansion of how that district map on the last page squares with some of the scenario. Planning that we were doing too. Because I think, you know, there are some assumptions that we were playing around with in here. So um, one of them for context, like on the neighborhood residential areas. You know, we said, you know, what if? Like as a reasonable assumption, or maybe it's not reasonable, I guess it's open for discussion, but you know, if fifteen percent of the current single-family houses. Became four-unit properties in some way, you know, between now and twenty fifty. You know, what would that look like? Is that a reasonable number for, you know, percentage of properties and parcels that might change over? You know, another way of looking at it is that, you know, you could get to that same number of new kind of housing in the neighborhood district by going from. You know, going up to thirty percent of parcels get, go from one unit to two unit, right? So. Um, thinking through. Thinking through some of those assumptions, I think helps check. Obviously, you know, the world in Ann Arbor will go on beyond twenty fifty, so. Um, that's not meant to be, you know, uh, an absolute cap on what can be built, but it's just sort of the trajectory that we, you know, might potentially be on. Um, and then for the mixed, the two mixed-use districts. You know, we had set sort of a, a target based on like average units per acre. Um, which is kind of a crude measure, but basically said like. You know, what if on average across the entire mixed-use transition areas that are identified here? We tried to get to an average of thirty units per acre density. Which, you know, accounting for the fact that, you know, there's big chunks of that area that are condo associations in HOAs that. Would be very difficult to ch- transition over to other uses. There may be larger suburban-style kind of commercial. Uses that um, you know, may not be likely to change over super quickly, so. But being thoughtful about where that change opportunity is. And then the hub districts were about sixty units per acre on average. Again. You know, any given development that we look at, you know, things that are occurring in the downtown or downtown area are obviously much higher density than that, but. Um, you know, it's. Probably unlikely in the next twenty-five years. probably unlikely in the next twenty five years that all of that area is going to be built out to that level of density, but looking at sixty units per acre is kind of a target. So comparing where we are today in terms of average density and where we would need to get to in twenty five years to hit those numbers starts to generate kind of a capacity over the next twenty five years that we're playing around with. And that capacity gets us actually a bit above scenario two. In terms of kind of potential for, you know, new growth and development to fit within these areas. That was it.
Thank you. If it's possible to um, update the slides that you have with those estimates, like the fifteen percent and the the first and then as you walk through or at least um, an addendum that has your uh, density estimates, I think that would just be helpful for reference. Uh, another call for commissioners before I comment. Not that it's a threat, but just wanting to hear from others first. Wow, you all are very kind. Um, all right. So Oliver, I want to go uh, all the way back to uh, slide forty. And uh, the reason for me, it's the neighborhood residential district uh, slide. It's the first one. So one thing, when I looked through the slide deck, um, I was just surprised because but most of the R districts are at thirty and some I think are at thirty five. Mr. Leonard could correct me um, with regard to that. So stating a thirty five height limit didn't seem to be much of a stretch, plus all of what's in the neighborhood residential district already exists within the city. It's just out of compliance in different places throughout the city. So in the neighborhood adjacent to mine, Dickens, we have duplexes. There are some quad duplexes that are in there as you go along seventh. As you head towards Liberty, there are lots of duplexes, small scale, um, multi-unit uh, development. So I was just really surprised to see this um, sort of codified um, in this way, because it's, it felt to me as if it's already existing. So it wasn't something that was new. It's just that we would be consolidating all the Rs into the new district. That would be the new thing. So I was hoping uh, that we would see uh, something that would go closer to forty uh, feet as a height limit um, in a, in a, what we might call a neighborhood residential district. And then I'll go back to my other comment about collapsing the mixed use. I think uh, having heard your presentation and then seeing the map, I think it would give us the most flexibility if we could collapse the mixed use into a mixed use buffer. And then we apply a TC one style approach to it. So if the forty is at the neighborhood, that's the boundary. It's forty feet in a residential neighborhood, then we start, I don't know. We could use TC one as the first layer into that and Mr. Leonard would have to tell me what the first uh, distance is in TC one that gets you the next height limit, but you go from forty to fifty five. And then there, that's that first buffer between a fifty five foot building and a forty foot building. And then a hundred and twenty feet gets you to the next um, buffered building, which might be seventy five to a hundred. And then we apply the three hundred feet to get to um, the current height restriction that's in TC one. And so then you, I think you accomplish everything that you've proposed here in the mixed use transition as well as in the mixed use um, hub, but we've taken the comp, the, what I would see as a complexity out of it. So if you show us the slide that uh, is forty five, the streamlined districts. So then we go from these five districts into just three. And then the buffer catches everything uh, that you have on here because it's it's flexible based on its um, proximate location to a neighborhood district. And so then that gives a lot of flexibility. It doesn't cause too many issues because our office district already today, for instance, has a fifty five foot height limit, which is adjacent to residential. And then it has those conflicting land use buffers between it. And so we want to watch that because we want to make sure that we're not reintroducing conflicting land use buffers, uh, which then ties up land that can't be developed because it's being restricted uh, for that. And so, so those, that, that's a bit of my thinking as we are looking out at this. I really appreciate uh, the overlay on the city map uh, that you all presented so that we could see that visually of how that would look. I'm still not convinced we need the flex district. Um, Mr. Leonard, I appreciate your explanation of holding land and trust for some future um, development that may happen. I, I, I just don't. I personally don't see the benefit of us holding land um, in that way. For whatever my opinion is worth. And then I'll correct my earlier comment, the, the high rise that was in my neighborhood um, was thirteen hundred feet. So I think that puts us at thirteen stories, not thirty, but I'm, I'm just going to make the thirty thirteen and say that you all misheard me. Other commissioners. Thank you, June, Commissioner Weatherby.
Well, I'm just imagining, you know, you looking up at this very tall building. Thirteen thirty close. I think I have in some ways a similar thought, but with a different set of districts. So I think of the neighborhood residential and mixed use transition being sort of the same. And then mixed use hub being different. And I, I think that's different from what Commissioner White was talking about, but a similar idea in part, you know, again, that's my lived experience. I live with buildings that on this presentation are both in that and they seem like we all live together happily, so or relatively happily. And I also think that uh, some of these distinctions are really like thirty five feet versus fifty five. It's, it's hard. I mean, there's a, a new building near me where from the front it's thirty feet, but from the back where most everybody else lives, it's like forty, forty five feet because of the way the land is. And you know, you're, the effects are of a taller building. Even though that it falls within the the, the height limit. So I think some of it is, you know, we, we have to put some parameters on by putting a height, but but it could really depend on a lot of things can change how that affects like your lived experience. And height is not necessarily the, how it actually, you know, whether it's sun or wind or you know, whatever the noise or whatever the thing is. But anyway, I do really appreciate consolidating a lot of these, whatever, however it works, like having you know, what is it? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight residential neighborhood residential, I think it's just confusing and I don't I don't think it leads to a better situation because there are so many buildings that are grandfathered and and are out of compliance. And so I think it, it wouldn't actually change how people live in most of those areas. It would just make it less complex. So um, and I know, you know, I'm also on the zoning board of appeals and like, you know, people are confused that they can't do this because they're in this district, but their neighbor can do that because the distances are different and, and I think making it more streamlined is a really good idea. I, I think it's, it's more confusing now. The, when it has all the distinctions. I, I also um, like the flex industrial mix use just because I, I know a lot of people who work in those industries. And I do think it's helpful to have some space set aside for that. I think it's kind of funny that it's the reverse of instead of protecting us from the meatpacking plants, we're actually like bringing the meatpacking plants we want. You know, but we have houses instead. But I, I do think that having some like not allowing big one story industrial parks comes along with that. Like, I think we can save flex space, but maybe not having it be such a land use that it is now. Or that we see in a lot of our existing ones.
Mr. Leonard.
Um, thank you. Uh, just a, a couple. I think a couple items that I want to bring up relative to this conversation. Um, at the steering committee, I just wanted to share the, at the steering committee. Um, their feedback was, I think, a little bit the opposite of going higher in these districts that would sort of encapsulate a lot of our current R one districts. They recognize that thirty five feet was actually taller than a lot of those districts and I just wanted to share that they were raising the thought that adding a lot of an, a density and use is absolutely appropriate there, so long as it was at a scale that seemed referential to that. So I just wanted to, to share that. And share a perspective that we heard from the steering committee. And then I, I want to wha- whatever, however, you know, whatever approaches, we will be consolidating districts. Um, whatever we end up with, I, I, one thing I do want to recognize when we're talking about this mixed use transition district, whether it gets combined with something else or not. We've been talking about the TC one examples and we don't have those things always accurate coming out of our, our mouths and we're looking at it on a daily basis. That built in stepping of a district that's intended to self-regulate is not always intuitive to uh, property owners and designers um, and builders. Um, it's, you, you can dive into it, but I, I just want to be upfront that it's not as easy as, oh, this is my height, this is my setback, full stop. And so, um, the, the benefit to reducing the number of districts, but adding a more complicated form framework to wider areas of the city. I, there's no right or wrong there. I just want to point that out. I think that it could be a trade off. So.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Jamie.
Um, I was just gonna add a little bit to the con, you know, the conversation about the thirty five feet and, you know, I think we need to I think the number of units allowed in the, the height kind of have to go hand in hand. Um, you know, if you allow a hundred story building on a parcel, but you still only allow four, four units, nobody's, nobody's going to build a hundred stories, yeah. So I think, you know, that conversation needs to go hand in hand. Um, and also just thinking about the cost of construction, like anything typically three stories is you don't need an elevator, anything over that, you do require an elevator. So it's, you know, just a different construction method. So just things to consider.
Thank you. Other commissioners. Oh, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt, and then we'll get you, Jamie, sorry.
Yes, to streamlined districts for sure. I think I appreciate this conversation. I don't, I, I got, for me, I'm surprised to see TC one under mixed use hub. I think obviously there's going to have to be a lot of like massaging and, and things in here. Like I see TC one is dense, but I also saw TC one is transitional. But on its face, I really like the idea of just having three or five zoning districts. People can sort of understand what's happening within them. And on neighborhood residential in the height in the comments, I'm sort of agnostic on the height, but I just want to point out. And I know we all know this, but like to have the neighborhood commercial that people seem to want, you need the density to support it. So some, so that might mean that we have to look at how to get like taller, more units within a specific building. If, you know, the coffee shop that everybody seems to want to be able to walk to can actually exist in that neighborhood. I'm getting tired, so I'm making even less sense.
No, you're making great sense. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt, Oliver.
Awesome. Thanks. Yeah, I think, you know, we've been kicking around this idea, just to, to your point, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt, about the kind of neighborhood retail, neighborhood goods and services, that notion of like a complete neighborhood. So like, where are the places in the city today that like, don't really have good walkable access to any of that retail or other amenities? Um, and what kind of density is needed to potentially support that, right? And so I think that's very much kind of part of the equation as we kind of look at the mix and uh, balance of different densities. One thing that I was going to add to which I just lost. Uh, it'll come back to me. We'll go back.
Yeah, I was gonna say, when it, when it, when it comes back around, just raise your hand again. Other commissioners, Commissioner Dish. Go ahead.
I don't have a substantive thing about heights and I, I think what's been said has been really terrific, but um, what has been going what my head has kind of been obsessing on is the language of, of neighborhood that you flagged earlier, Commissioner White. And um, if these slides are going to be used again for more presentations or even maybe before they get posted, I, I wonder if we couldn't just rather than calling these neighborhood areas, because I think it is correct that every area where there's residential uh, where there are residential buildings is a neighborhood. And so I don't think that we want to use the word neighborhood as a stand in for lower scale or one or two story housing. So I don't know if it is better to call it lower scale. And I'm not convinced about that, but uh, one or two story residences, because I know that some of the idea of if this far away from X and the X is called neighborhood housing, right? So I, I can see that it might get clunky, but I would just really, really, really strongly urge that we not feed into the stereotype that um, neighborhoods look like where Dick and Jane grew up behind their white picket fence.
Thank you, Commissioner Dish for that comment. Commissioner Hammer Schmidt, did you put your hand back up? No, it's still up. Okay, Oliver, did you remember your comment? All right. And then we'll go to, oh, and then we'll go to Commissioner Weatherby after you, Oliver.
Awesome. I did remember my comment. I think, um, and it was, I can't remember who uh, mentioned the point earlier, just that you know, there's a lot of diversity within those R one districts today. And even, you know, within, you know, an R one B district to pick on one, I mean, there's going to be different forms of buildings, right? I mean, one neighborhood might be bungalows, one neighborhood might be all brick ranches, another one is all you know, traditional uh, you know, turn of the century housing. So um, and that's all getting sort of blown apart for lack of a better word in this approach, right? And a lot more things are going to be allowed within those areas. And I just want to raise that because I think, you know, from a from like a public perception and like, what does this mean to me, you know, sitting in my neighborhood today standpoint, like it's opening the doors for some significant change, right? I think there's the building sort of style dimension aspect to this, that's something that does look very uniform today is probably not going to be as uniform looking as it is in the, in the future. And I think helping the community to get on board with that and understand that you know, that's one of the trade offs to be negotiated here in terms of trying to um, add more kind of missing middle housing and density into the equation. I think we can help kind of empower that argument by also bringing it back to the things that the community is asking for too, right? People that are um, aging in their house that want to downsize, but still stay as part of their neighborhood, to use that word in the literal neighborhood sense, right? They don't have a place to move to that's close to where they're living today. That's in a different style of housing that's more suitable to their needs, for instance. And there's people at all different life stages that are trying to find housing that suits their needs. Um, so I think part of you know, the justification, which you all know um, for, for greater flexibility is to allow more of those choices and options to be woven in, but that does mean a change from, you know, what may be very uniform um, characteristics or standards in the neighborhood today. So managing that is, I think just something to be mindful of. I think the other side of the equation, which we haven't really talked on, is also around lot size too, right? So going, you know, the R one A districts is a twenty thousand square foot minimum lot size, which you know, if we're saying, you know, four units by right, regardless of lot size, and then maybe more units if your lot size is even bigger than that. Um, you know, that could translate into really substantive change in the fabric of um, how those residential areas are um, structured and operating today and just being mindful of what that change is and how we manage that and communicate that um, to the public and what the trade offs is will be important, I think.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherby.
So just a couple of random things that popped in my head, but So just a couple of random things that popped in my head, but, uh, one is if we do have these districts where the sort of heights change as closer to residential, as we build more residential, how does that affect? You know, do we just steadily get lower and lower and lower because you can do one taller building and then that is residential and then it's sort of, you know, everything gets smaller because there is more residential. So that's just one thing as, as we're talking about this that I kind of thought of. And then the other thing that, that kind of is making me laugh is that we are almost going back to sort of the old way. I mean, my neighborhood, every, you know, there were many places or my area, there were many places that had grocery store in the front of the house, the, the rest of the house in the back. You still see those windows there. Not really allowed, but now, but with cottage food industry and all that, you know, it's very easy that you could actually just have a little bakery in your house and sell things out the, the front door or that, that even retail and commercial in some of these areas might not look like what we think of as retail and commercial. That, that along with the different scaling and the opportunities are different. It doesn't have to be a 2,500 square foot minimum retail building with X, you know, that it could be someone selling baked goods from their front porch and that that see that, that that is a, an old form that may be coming back if, as we, as we make changes and it's, I don't, you know, there's nothing, it's just an interesting thing to me. It's not, you know, I don't know that we build it in or don't build it in, but that as we do get more people and we do loosen some of the regulations or that there are some other opportunities.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Mr. Leonard.
Yeah. Thank you very much to the committee for this discussion. It was, um, just speaking for myself, I really enjoyed this discussion with the steering committee likewise with all of you. To Commissioner Dish's comments, I just want to be clear, this is a public information, but, um, I think that I and the team hear the message about our terminology. So you'll see future iterations of this where we'll find a more appropriate way to, to categorize these, these districts. Next steps is, um, we're really, um, this is really helpful to start framing some of the, um, structure, um, getting that sort of our version of our vision statement, um, to start building the structure around, around this plan, start, um, frankly, thinking about where different categories are going to be going, uh, or there are different pieces of the plan, uh, what categories they are going to be located in. Just so this committee, uh, subcommittee knows, um, I will be, uh, appointing, uh, series of, uh, a handful of focus groups, um, around some special topic areas. Um, these are going to be areas that I'm, I and the consultant team are going to be bouncing ideas off of. Um, these are people that I'm going to be selecting based on community experience or technical expertise. So that we can be presenting recommendations to you and the steering committee that we think are sound and mindful of, um, everything from trends to, um, best practices. So, um, that's going to be happening in the next couple of weeks. Um, we've got a few more pop-up events, um, that are going to be happening. We're also in the final stages. It's literally in my inbox for me just to give the consultancy in the AOK. We're going to be sharing, um, what we're calling a meeting in a box, um, which is a, uh, an assembly of a lot of the exercises that we've provided and different engagement opportunities. But they're being formatted in a way that people can have their own conversations with whatever size group that they want. Um, and they can share that information with us as well to feed into this process. Or they're always welcome to invite, uh, the planning team to come out and have that conversation with them as well. So lots, lots going on. Um, but really thank you for this conversation. It really does help us start solidifying some organizational aspects and really get starting, getting to the next steps of finishing this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Uh, for the, uh, non-panelists attendees, again, if you've had a question or a comment that you weren't able to get at the beginning of the meeting, you can send it to us via our email address at planning at a2gov.org. And then if I could ask the, the consultants, if, is it possible to get a higher resolution, um, version of the PDF? Because when you try to zoom in on like the map, for instance, you can't actually read the legend. As an example, so if there's a reason, a way to get a higher version, um, posted, um, that would just be helpful as a personal request.
Get that posted to the project website. So it's accessible, Oliver.
Yeah, we have, there's a standalone PDF of that that we had put in the presentation. That's
Yeah. And that's what I downloaded.
Yeah.
And I can't on my version. I can send it to Mr. Leonard so that he can see why mine is broken, but I can see everything. But if, for instance, if I'm on page 46 and I'm looking at that beautiful map you've created and I just do one zoom in, I can no longer read the lower, um, legend that you have, the words just start to get pixelated, uh, right away. This is super nerdy. Uh, and no one but me cares about this. So if you just want to send it directly to me, I'll be satisfied.
Guarantee you are not the only one that wants to zoom in on something.
Well, thanks, everyone. We will, um, bring our gathering to a close. It's 8:59. So you have an extra minute. Uh, spend it wisely. And we will see you soon. Have a good day, everyone.
Good night.